Pursuant to Governor Beaker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A and subsection 18 in the governor's March 15th, 2020 order suspending, excuse me, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Hubbardson Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found at www.hubbardsonma.us. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite this efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after this meeting.
Okay. So I want to recognize we have a quorum here. Members present are Francois Steiger, John Demalia, Christopher Monroe, and myself, Alice Lipton, Chair. So we do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. We usually open with public comments. In this case, it wouldn't be, if you want to make, if you're here, you sign on because of the sign by law that will take comments during that public hearing instead. But if there are other members of the public, you have anybody, Mallory, that wants to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So then we have a very quick order of business, which is approval of minutes from November 19th, 2020. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve them? John?
Madam Chair, this is Safran Swisher. I'd like to make a motion. However, I'm a bit confused because the agenda says it's minutes approved for 11:05. I'm assuming that that was incorrect. And we just need to make sure that we are updating eight minutes.
I didn't see that. Mallory, story with that.
Just want to make sure that we have it either correct as November the 5th or November the 19th, so.
Yeah, okay, let me double check real quick.
Thank you.
I could have downloaded the wrong one.
I put it down on the wrong one.
I did. Sorry, everybody sitting there, but if we don't do minutes, they get.
Get pinged.
Get skipped and then we get in trouble, so.
Exactly. I mean, I have to assume that the date is correct and the minutes themselves, which is November the 19th. Because the 15th was a, hold on, no, the 5th you said. 5th would have been also a date, so.
See. So I mean, there's not. Yeah.
Right, it's the 19th?
Right, it's the 19th.
Okay. All right, so it's wrong on the agenda, but it's right on the handout. And I don't think that's a problem. I think that won't get us in trouble.
Madam Chair, this is Safran Swisher, having read the minutes, and make sure that this is the November 19th, the ones I am at this point in time. Asking then that we submit these here for approval by our board.
Can we have a second from somebody?
This is John, I second.
Okay, comments or corrections by anybody? Hearing none, let's vote to approve. Lipton, I.
Steiger, I.
Demalia, I.
Monroe, I.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, very excitingly, we have guests from MRPC that are helping out with our master plan. And after months and months and months and many chapters, we're getting to the exciting part, which is the land use element of the chapter. And it's, I hope you all have had a chance to read it. So John Hume is here and he's going to introduce the presenter, who is Jen Bernie. John?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Terrific, okay. Jen has been working diligently on the land use chapter for the town of Hubbardston Master Plan. And Jen is a relatively new employee for the Monitius Regional Planning Commission. She's been on board for a few months now, I think since November. Some of her background includes Director of Planning, Land Use, and Economic Development for the town of Lincoln, Massachusetts. And other qualifications include Planning Director of Land Use and Economic Development for South Borough, Massachusetts. And also for the town of Bolton, she was the Director of Planning, Land Use, and Economic Development. Also Jennifer has worked in the town of Sudbury, Mass as Assistant Town Planner for the Department of Planning and Community Development. And she's also worked for the town of Hudson, Massachusetts, Grant Management Assistant, Department of Community Development. And she has a Masters from University of Massachusetts, I believe. Masters of Regional Planning. So she's been working on the land use element for probably over a month, probably about five weeks or so. And she has developed a PowerPoint presentation. And we also sent out a draft of the land use element to the department with Hubbardston for distribution a few days ago. And would appreciate comments on the land use element, the draft land use element, over the next two weeks or so. So I know it's a lot of information, but we do have a lot of time to comment on it. So saying that, I'd like to turn things over to Jen.
Sure, thank you so much for the introduction. Good evening, everyone. It was really excited to work on this plan. I've really only worked in small communities, as John mentioned, in land use. I've worked on a lot of mixed-use overlay districts and design guidelines, as well as working with agricultural open space. So I have a wide range of backgrounds, so I was really excited to work on this project and learn about Hubbardston. It's such a beautiful community, and you have so many different things that you can work on to enhance and to meet your goals. But let me just pull up the PowerPoint. It's only going to be about 10 minutes. I have probably about nine slides. And I'd rather just at the end have it open discussion to talk about the goals and see what questions you might have for me. So let me see if I can do the screen share. I think you have to allow me to do that, Alice. Let's see.
Not me, Mallory.
Yeah. Me, believe me.
Jen, I'll just have to make you a co-host for this part of the meeting.
Okay.
One second.
No worries.
All right, you should be able to go.
Okay, terrific. Let's see if I can pull this up. Screen share, there we go. And now I just have to find my PowerPoint. There it is. Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Terrific. So the land use is just one element of the master plan. As you know, you've been working on different chapters. Housing, transportation, natural resources, et cetera. For, I think, for planning boards, the most exciting chapter is probably the land use, where it kind of ties in everything. As you know, Hubbardston has large amounts of developed forest and wetlands and water, which can just be observed driving around or looking at aerial photos. This is a breakdown of the land cover and land use. I chose the top four. So 74% is covered by forest. 13.2 is wetlands and water. Residential accounts for 4.8% and agricultural agriculture 3.6. Open space is 40.62% or a little over 10,000 acres. That's quite a bit, and that includes federal, state, and municipal. Throughout the master plan section, I put in toolkit. So as you're reading the handout, and I just want to point out on the top of this slide that, you know, it'll be important for Hubbardston, Hubbardston to, you know, continue looking at open space and ways that you can protect it. So working with local, private, and public agencies to do that. So the chapter land accounts for 1,441 acres. And chapter land consists of forestry, which is, you can see here, 694 acres. Agricultural, which is 409 acres, and then recreation, 338 acres. And I know it gets confusing when people see chapter 61 and chapter 61A and 61B. I've put it there for you to see, to see what that breakdown is. And again, looking at ways to preserve that through an agricultural protection restriction, which is also known as an APR or a conservation restriction, which is known as a CR. Zoning, so zoning, we're going to get into the breakdowns now of the residential and the commercial. But zoning exists, and that's a way to regulate the land use policies. And you're regulating the uses that are allowed, the density, the intensity. And you'll, you can see how that impacts how the land use patterns are in a community. So in Hubbardston, 51%, so this is your total land, 51% is undevelopable, has absolute constraints. 8% is already developed in the community. 37% is undevelopable with partial constraints. And then there's only 5% that's left that can be developed, which has no constraints. And this is in the residential district, so that now we'll go into more detail.
Jennifer, may I interrupt you here for a second?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
When you say partial constraints, could you give some examples? I think that would be helpful.
Oh, sure, yeah. So partial constraints can mean that, well, absolute constraints. Let me just pull that up for you so I can read it accurately for you. That's a really good question. And it's in, it's in the handout, so it goes into how we, how we break this down. But it can be, you know, wetlands, and here it is. I want to make sure I'm getting the, so your absolute constraints or partial constraints for this, for this purpose are the FEMA 100 and 500 flood planes, as well as wetlands. Those are your partial ones. So meaning there might be areas within a property that could be developed still. That's not impacted by the 100- or 500-year flood. And then your absolute constraints are, you know, defined as water, the 100-foot setbacks, the River Protection Acts, buffers and slopes higher than 26%, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So as we look at the residential, one map that I wanted to really, I had our GIS department look at this, is I wanted to see where single-family homes were located in Hubbardston on 80,000 square feet or less. As you know, your zoning requirement is 80,000 square feet, so I wanted to see where it was located. So due to your Hubbardson's rural history and large lot zoning requirements, single-family homes only occupy about 4.8% of the land. So your large zoning requirement has led to sprawling residential growth. So meaning that you kind of have housing all over the community, but where is the dense housing and why do you have that? Well, that's a result of pre-zoning, so before you had zoning in place or the large acre zoning. So you can see in the brown-tannish areas where single-family homes are. And you can see it really concentrated in the town center along main roads. Also in some of your cluster developments, too. You'll see that. Is there any questions on this, this slide? Okay. So your residential consists of a little over 25,000 acres, your residential agricultural. And you can see the breakdown there. I'm not going to read every single number, but you have about 1,200, little over 1,200 acres that's available without constraints. That doesn't mean it can all be developed. You have, you know, the dimensional requirements, you have, you know, roads and driveways that have to be put in. Excuse me, my border colleague just busted in the door. The difficulty of working from home. He does it every meeting I have. Another map that I thought was really important to look at was your town center. Many rural communities would kill to have a town center, and that's one thing that Hubbardson should be proud of, that you actually have a town center. And so I wanted to see what the five-minute radius is. If you look at Smart Growth is a section in the master plan. They say that people can walk, will walk about five minutes. So you can see, you know, the first ring, the first purple ring is a five-minute walk or a quarter mile. And then that second ring is another five minutes. So you can see that there's a lot of walking ability in your town center. And we'll talk about that more under the goals, but I just wanted to point that out while we're maybe going in the breakdown. So your commercial and industrial district and your businesses, you know, there's not a lot of that, and that's due to the large lot requirements. And also you have some businesses scattered away from the town center. But looking at your town center is about 67 acres, a little over 67 acres. And currently, there's no land available to be developed without constraints. So you had about 30 acres that's developable with partial constraints. So you know, that's something that the town's going to have to look at more closely, is how can you, if the town does decide it wants to develop, how can you, how can you develop? And we'll talk about that under the goals. So looking at the commercial, it's about 341 acres is zoned, and 89 acres has already been developed. But there's no, there's no land available without constraints, but you do have about 164 acres that's developable with partial constraints.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You took out the, the, and because there's a big section of land that runs through that, that is restricted under the, you know, DCR restrictions for land use, wetlands protection.
Yeah. You're talking about in the commercial area?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that would have been taken out as one of the analysis, but I'll double-check that. So the lar, it's a large DCR within, okay.
The watershed act, you know, the, we know that it's a problem because we just had two people propose developments, not checking it first, and it took a huge chunk out of their land, so.
Okay. So in the, this master plan section, there's five main goal recommendations that we have. And as you're looking at the, as you're reading through it, you'll see a lot more detail. I didn't want to overwhelm you in the slides, but the first one would be protecting open space, forestry, and agriculture. And how can you do that? And there's many, you know, we talked a little bit earlier. It's looking at ways to put, you know, conservation restrictions on, or, you know, 61A or the 61 lands, or an APR, which is the agricultural protection restrictions. There's also other ways that communities can look at saving farms. And I've worked with a lot of communities on this. It's actually looking at your bylaws and land uses. And that's one of the most powerful tools that you can do. So for example, for farms, you could allow accessory uses to allow them to diversify, like pick your own, doing farm tours or farm stays, renting the facilities. You know, do you allow restaurants or wineries or breweries? And a lot of value-added things like doing educational, recreational weddings. We were actually in one of the communities I worked in, we were able to save a historic house that was going to be torn down by changing the zoning that would allow a bed and breakfast, would allow a little tea tasting type of a shop. Or we've, you know, changed zoning that would allow an antique shop, different things like that. So that's a way of looking at it. There's also transfer of development rights, known as TDR. So the second goal is protecting your water and natural resources. And some of those things can be a low-impact development bylaw. And I think I read through that Hubbardson did explore that at one time. It's also looking at stormwater bylaws. The third one is looking at zoning that would allow higher density, mixed use, you know, creating walkability near your town center. And you can do that by looking at, you know, village zoning, mixed-use zoning, developing design guidelines. I've worked with, you know, with small communities, creating those things. Looking, you know, at the density, could you change the lot size? Could you reduce the frontage, the setbacks, you know, the height, the lot coverage? And then looking at allowing different housing types in a town center, like multifamily townhouses or mixed use. The third, I'm sorry, the fourth one is really the same thing, looking at your commercial industrial uses, looking at the density and the setback. Are there other uses that you could allow? Are there uses that really don't make sense that you want to, you know, do you want to keep those same uses? Are they the best and greatest use? And you could say that for both the town center. And then the last one is exploring affordable housing in the community. And there's many ways of doing that. Inclusionary housing requirements, allowing in-law or accessory apartments, allowing duplexes, multifamily. So those are many, you know, many ways that a community can achieve some of these goals. And I know I've looked at a lot of your studies and plans that you've done. The town's done a lot, a lot of work with surveying, et cetera. So with that, I think the next step is for the planning board to look over this master plan, land use section, and see, you know, let us know if you have any suggestions, you want us to look at anything further, you have any edits. Do these goals seem like, are these the goals that the planning board would like to recommend? Is there anything you'd like to add or take out? So we're very open to whatever your feedback is. But with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you would like. So I'm going to, I'll leave my screen, this PowerPoint up, just in case you have any other questions.
Anybody else want to jump in, questions?
Don't be shy.
Trying to find what I did with my notes. I guess. I don't know, I do, I will submit some just corrections things. There's some odd things, like our fire department isn't in our town center offices. It's, anyway.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I'll just send those, is, is, you know.
Yeah, that would be terrific.
Points of information. I did want to ask, though. Is it common, because we've debated this issue around too, with the in-laws versus accessory apartments? So we allow not accessory, we allow accessory uses, you know, like if you've got a barn, you can turn it into your art studio or whatever. But we, but our only apartments have to be, you know, relative. Do most, most communities these days allow, allow accessory apartments? I think many of our in-law apartments, in fact, are used as accessory, you know, it's not always, you know, it's a friend that lives there or something, but I'm sort of open to that. I don't know what the rest of the board feels like, but.
Yeah, and I'm sure John can, you know, chime in on this, too. In the communities that I have experience with, and I know many communities are looking, there are communities that do not have in-law or accessory apartments. But many communities have it as an accessory apartment, so it's not required that it is a relative. And, you know, there's differences. Some communities require that it's inside the structure or it's attached. So when I was in Bolton, we required that it was attached. It was either within or attached. The problem was with the attached, if you had a property with a barn, and want to put the in-law or the accessory apartment in the barn, you would now see like a covered walkway that would connect the barn to the house. Some of them would be very long, just to achieve that.
I'm just thinking that with, looking for easy fixes to accommodate younger couples and to accommodate older couples, right?
Yeah.
So you have a lot of people that would stay in their house if they could keep, if they could have a caretaker or a nanny. In theory, not, neither of those people are related. But also maybe they could just rent an apartment, which would help with the housing crunch if you've got a big old house with one person living in it.
Absolutely, and we've seen that a lot. So you see that with a lot of elderly people or people that are downsizing, their kids are gone, and they want to supplement, you know, their income so that they can stay, stay there. Sometimes you'll see the reverse where they're moving in it and, you know, the family is moving in, you know, the main, main house. But often it's a, it's a way of supplementing their income. Often, you know, it's teachers or it's a single person. We've also, I've seen many times, it's, you know, an elderly parent coming from another community that's moving in with a family, but they still want the parent to be independent. So it's a great way to have a parent live, you know.
We could do that.
But they're, yeah. Or I've seen it where it's, you know, a disabled adult child that they want them to live independently, but they're, you know, so they have the accessory apartment.
Okay, another question that I have. Anybody else jump in? But I'm sort of amenable to the idea of a, having at least some areas in town where the minimum lot size would be an acre, you know, instead of two acres. But I'm just wondering how you would go about doing that? Would it be just, you know, you say, okay, these sections, we're going to rezone to smaller, and it's like a residential agriculture two district or something? Or an overlay district? How would you do that?
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good point. So for example, let's take a look at your town center. Let's use that as an example. If the town felt, you know what, we If the town felt, you know what, we have two acre zoning in our town center. It's not dense enough to create a real active town center. Does that make sense where we start and do one acre zoning in the town center or less? Keeping the rest of, you know, the community Hubbardston rural. You can also do transit zoning. So, you know, you'd have the town center be half acre zoning and then the ring around it going out a little further would be one acre zoning, but the rest of the community, two acre zoning. So for example, in Lincoln, Lincoln is very rural, similar to Hubbardson, has two acre zoning. But in the town center, the very small town center that they have, they have different zoning. So it's less than an acre.
But does Lincoln have water and sewer?
Lincoln did not have sewer. And it had water in certain areas of town. And that's, that also limits a community or limits what you can do. So I did look that you've done a sewer study, right? Looking at the different options. So I think that's what a lot of, yeah, I think that's what a lot of, you know, rural communities struggle with. But there's, there's ways around it, package treatment, plants, etc. But it will limit it. I mean, not having, not having public sewer.
Have you had any luck with, one of the things we have a lot of in town are old gravel pits, which are in various, most of them have not been scraped out to the point they could never be restored. But it's definitely expensive to restore them. And most of them would have great potential for, you know, a lot of sand and gravel, right? So a septic system wouldn't be any problem on an acre lot or a half acre lot. Has it, have you ever seen that technique used by anybody to try to reclaim land?
Yeah, I mean, I can give you a couple examples. So when I was in Bolton, there, I don't know if you're familiar with Bolton, but it had an old gravel pit that was behind Bolton Orchards. And that didn't get redeveloped for housing. Unfortunately, they ended up putting a large, one of the largest solar installations on that development. In the community where I live in Hudson, we have a gravel pit that they're actually finishing scraping now. And they're trying to do an over fifty-five development. So, John, I don't know if you have any experience with formal gravel pits, but I think.
Not so much. No, not so much.
Okay, yeah. So I think things, you know, there's always potential for redevelopment, just properties.
I'm just thinking ways in which you could sell it to the community. You know, smaller, smaller lots. Anyway, we do have a senior, actually a senior of fifty-five and over community that I believe was a formal gravel pit and was developed that way as well. Well, there's a lot to think about in your plan. Which, and also how do you involve the pub? There's another chapter, right? That's the implementation.
Yes, there is. The town of Hubbardston, well, we got funded through MRPC to do an implementation plan. So we're going to be working on that during the winter. And also me and Jen are going to be working on, on the housing chapter too over the next month and trying to finish that up. That'll actually be the next chapter that we present as a draft. And would like to get in touch with, with you as we move along over the next month or so. But we did get funding for implementation, pulling all the chapters back all into one master plan. And we hope to finish by early spring, April or May.
So if you were going to say, follow through on one of these ideas, I, you know, I found out there just for the sake of discussion. Would it, would it include concrete suggestions that we adopt? Say accessory apartments so that we adopt smaller lots in certain areas? Or, or do we need like a citizen and, you know, officials group to push that along? How does that get done?
Well, I think that when we present the housing chapter, the draft housing chapter, perhaps you could invite other boards and committees to the meeting to get their input. We could get a lot more public input that way. Perhaps the board of selectmen could, could, could join the meeting next month. Perhaps if you have an affordable housing committee, they could, they could join.
We are the Affordable Housing Committee, John.
And also the Economic Development Committee. So we could get a lot of public input from that. And also after we compile a draft master plan, we put it online in, put advertisements to the newspaper with a web link asking for public input on the recommendations that were made. And we'd, we'd, we'd welcome comments at that stage of the game through the implementation plan.
When you get to the point where you have your, your next chapter that you think planning board and development, the economic development people be interested, just put in your note. That in your note and we'll try to make sure that Mallory gets a note out to them. And if they want to combine efforts, I know we're like meeting with the select board next month on, on other things. But you, we, so you might wind up being a Monday meeting than, than rather than a Thursday meeting to, in order to include them, but it might be really worth it, I think.
Yeah. Another thing that I was thinking too, with our funding source from the state, we were supposed to have a public forum. Whoever COVID interfered with that.
Right.
If, if we could think of ways that would like to approach that, that'd be really good over the next month. Do we want to have another survey distributed throughout the community? Or would we like to use instead of a public forum, it would be a virtual public forum. We do have the capacity at MRPC to hold up to three hundred persons involved in a go-to meetings virtual. So we have those options and I think it'd be really good to do that. I think, yeah, so this is just food for thought. And whatever way the board thinks would be the most appropriate way to get some additional public information would, would welcome that because that component is in there in, in the funding source and the scope of work.
I like the, I like the idea of a, you know, a public, a virtual public forum meeting where we invite, you know, boards and citizens. Let me, I will float it. We're meeting with the select board on the February first, just coming right up. I'll put that on the agenda to talk to them as a group. And get back to you.
I think that'd be terrific. And right now, well, we're almost towards the end of January. Maybe we could do something in March, early March. I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity to get some public input before we keep going and finishing up the master plan. Let's get some public involvement now.
All right, I'll see what I can do. And we'll talk about, I'll talk to you about it in the coming week.
That'd be great.
Try to talk to the select board and Ryan, you know. Okay, great. Well, thank you. Other questions from anybody?
I quickly, the, first of all, very, very nice presentation, very excellently done. My question here is, is you have a number of maps on your the document that was sent to us. It's been, I believe this would be pages twenty-three through thirty-one. Can you provide us the source of this information? I mean, I think it's just really good information for us to have also.
Yeah, that is all from our GIS department. So, yeah, we'll provide. So you can see on the, the, the maps that it's done by MRPC.
Okay, are these publicly available or?
Yeah, we'll provide all of this to you. Yep.
Going with this here, if, if you have the source of this here and maybe even a URL or ways in which we're going to get access to this here or make reference to it in your document itself, that will be, I think, a very good piece of information.
Okay, absolutely.
And, and Alice, I'm thinking of this here in terms of some of the subject areas that we have been discussing that are not, not in, not in this vein, but really having to do with other, you know, developments as we're looking at, you know, from a commercial perspective for, you know, the battery, battery energy storage systems or the solar or the, or anything else for all intensive purposes. Good to have this, this on our finger, on our fingertips.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll provide you, we'll provide all of this electronically to these maps so that you have, you have everything. You know, the master plan coming from, you know, a planner working only with, you know, municipalities, your master plan is your best tool for planning, you know, for the future. As a planner, this is what I would look at. This is what guides the planning board and other departments to set goals and, and what they're going to work on. And, you know, for example, if you wanted to work on the, the town center or, you know, inclusionary zoning or accessory apartments, it's usually, you know, it could be the planning board doing it. It could be a subcommittee that's formed. Whether it's, you know, for example, if you're going to look at mixed use zoning in your town center, how I've done it in the past is you form a subcommittee and it's, you know, planning board member, member, someone from housing, someone from board of selectmen, you know, all the various stakeholders. So that you're getting a lot of different input on moving something forward. And sometimes it can just be the planning board too. That's another approach. All right. Well, I look forward to your comments. And if you have any questions that come up, feel free to send me an email.
What's your email address?
It is, and I guess I did not put it on the slide. It's J Bernie. So my last name, B U R N E Y at MRPC.org.
Got it. Okay. You'll, you'll hear from me and maybe I'll try to gather other committee comments together as well.
Yeah, that would be great. It would be great if this can be, you know, posted on the town's website and asking people to look it over. Or however you, you know, want to proceed. I don't know if the planning board wants to look at it first.
I would have no problem posting a draft. Commit, comments from people because it's been very hard to get the public involved.
I know. It's, it's a challenging time.
Yeah. Mallory, you could do that, right? Okay, well, put that on your to-do list there and we'll get it done. Thank you. We look forward to the next chapter and working with the ideas here.
Great. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks, John.
Hi, John.
Good night. All right. Okay, our next issue is a public hearing. And sadly, I don't know whether we have any members of the public out there, but there are certain things, do we?
No.
Have other people? Well, then we may have people that have, I guess if anybody's even listening, you would know, right? Yeah. So, anyway, we do have the sign bylaw and I just, I don't know, just for everybody to, to sort of think about where we are on this, I'll spend a few minutes on it. It's supposed to be a public hearing. I actually make it a public hearing because that is one of the requirements that we have it. So, I guess we need a motion to go, I'll tell you what the public is hearing is about, then I'll take a motion to go into public hearing. It pertains to, is a public forum for the purpose of reviewing a replacement sign bylaw, which will replace the current article seventeen of the Hubbardson zoning bylaw. And there was, it notice was posted of this meeting in the Gardner News and in the town hall pursuant to Massachusetts General laws forty A, section five. So we need a motion to go into the public hearing to return to our regular meeting once we've completed that public hearing. Someone to make, someone want to make that motion?
I'm chair, this is Officer Steyer. I'd like to make the motion that we now enter the public hearing with the understanding that upon completion, we're going to be leaving that public hearing and then returning to the, the regular session that we have.
Is there a second?
Christopher Monroe for a second.
Okay, all in favor, lived ally? Okay, all right. So as background, this bylaw was actually, we actually had a request as a planning board, update it through the Economic Development Board. And we did a lot of, the previous bylaw was very convoluted and difficult. And we didn't get so many complaints that it was unfair as it, it was just sort of inscrutable, you know? So we decided to start and create a bylaw from scratch because we also could not find very good models around, although we did have some help from MRPC on it. So we had multiple meetings, we, and we ultimately had a very talented town administrator at the time. I mean, planning board administrator Christina Sutcliffe, who, who, who would have been in a private, prior life, you know, writer, who actually did the yeoman's work on this, putting it together. And she used as her, her starting point, these towns, which we benchmarked that we would like Hubbardston to be like. And those towns were Ashburn, Hambury, Holden, Princeton and Westminster. So they were sort of the reference group for putting it together. We also took into detail of what actually exists on the, exists here in Hubbardston particularly. When we were looking at sizes of signs, we actually went out and measured some of the signs, aided us in our thinking going forward. So again, the signs, the intention is to bring signs put, you know, either abandoned or not up yet to have them conform going forward. I know that there's, we, we also had to address the issue of temporary signs. A lot of debate on that. And we finally came up with this draft after much work was circulated to the zoning enforcement officer, the building department, the economic development committee, the board of selectmen and the finance committee. People submitted various comments. Those comments were integrated into this. And the bylaws was revised to also incorporate input from town council. So we were all set to go and this was going to go be on the town meeting vote last spring. And then we were asked to take it off in the interest of keeping the meeting as short as possible due to the COVID restrictions. So, anyway, we, we're here and they, we, we are meeting with the select board again. But I believe the consensus is that it's been made available and it's time to move on and put it on the, put it on the warrant and make, you know, and give people an opportunity to comment still if they want. But rather than hold off another year because it's an order of magnitude better than the existing sign by law. So, I mean, I think I've preaching to the choir here. I don't know that I need to read it, but some of the big issues were regarding illuminated signs and LED signs and, you know, so without going through it in great detail, if you look at the charts at the end, it tells you a lot. Again, we have three zoning districts. So we have one table that's the number of signs you can have in a district. And we do have this rule after a lot of debate, if you're going to have a window sign, it can only obscure fifty percent of the windows. And we have a sign that's dimensions of signs that are allowed per district. And that was based on some, a lot of, a lot of thought. Part of the problem is that there are businesses scattered along sixty-eight and elsewhere in town that are home businesses that will want to do some signage. So as you can see, we have how big primary signs they are in the town center. They can be up to fifty square feet in the residential district, only ten square feet, commercial district, fifty square feet. Those are for primary signs. And then we have the different kinds of signs, canopy signs, when gateway signs, multi-tenant ladder signs, wall signs and so on. And then we had a lot of talk about illuminated. And then we had a lot of talk about illuminated signs. And where we came out on that was we would not allow balloon signs, so-called internally lit signs, except for municipalities or nonprofits such as hospitals and so on. LED signs are, are allowed somewhere places, but quite restricted. The only, the scrolling, no scrolling, no flashing signs. But the, I'm trying to think of an acronym. Design at the rec field. Public information signs are allowed only by, only by the municipality. There's a lot of other restrictions such as banner signs across the street. The only people allowed to do that are municipalities. You don't have to get a permit for temporary signs, but there are regulations on temporary signs, how long they can be up, when they must be removed, when the town can remove them if they are not, if the owner of the sign didn't remove them, which is, I believe it's two weeks prior and two weeks after an event. Anyway, oh. Yeah, it's the LED scrolling message signs. They can't scroll, they can't flash, but the town is allowed to put them up to put public service messages off. So I don't know whether any one on the board wants to comment on them. It's a little, little bit of an overview and where we're going on this. If not, you've all read it and agree. We can close the public hearing if there's nobody out there and move along. Comments?
Not this time for myself, Madam Chair. I, I agree with you. This has been.
Christopher, did you get a chance to read it?
Yes, I have. I, I don't have any comments. I obviously find it regrettable that we don't have anybody coming in for public comment tonight, but I don't have any comments as to the, the proposed by law itself.
You thought it was pretty readable and straightforward? The last one, very convoluted. So it's really is a big improvement. And I think we should go ahead with it. We don't have drastic changes, actually. It's mostly just making, you know, making it much clearer and more user friendly, I would say. All right. So a motion to call, do we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Probably do. Okay. Can somebody make that motion for me?
Madam Chair, at this point in time, I'd like to put a motion that we close the public here, I'm sorry, the, the, the hearing that we go back into a public meeting.
This is John Demilia. I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing non-lived all eye?
Steiger, I.
Demilia, I.
Monroe, I.
Okay, great. This takes us, takes us to action items. And the first of the action items is one oh six Gardner Roads A and R, which is one that you may recall, we had last meeting, we were trying to be so accommodating to these people. And then an issue came up and anyway, we have resolved it. Are they here, Mallory?
No.
Wow. Okay. All right. I feel like I do all the talking, but in this case. So here was a story with this plan. If you look at the A and R, the house exists on the lot in the middle. And what they're trying to do, which was attached to all of that backland. The lot, the very lot, it's what's shown as an intersection is owned by the Commonwealth. The one above that is a lot that was covered out some time ago, also belongs to a member of the family. But it, it wasn't created to sort of dodge the zonings. It was created some time ago and it's a different arm of the family. So that was clarified. And then, so then there's this issue, they're going to cut out the house lot and the houses actually, we held up the closing because of this issue. And the issue was they show High Bridge Road. And High Bridge Road does not exist there. It was discontinued, I don't know, thirty, forty years ago. At the point, you can get to High Bridge Road, you got to go up to Morgan Road, you got to drive around and it comes in through the back and then it stops within the middle of the state forest before it gets to the railroad track. And Bill told us, which I guess is the best explanation I have anyway, Bill, Bill Holmans, that it was discontinued because the railway company didn't want to put a crossing there. I don't know, for whatever reason, it exists on paper. And I did go down a rabbit hole looking for, he thought there had been a vote to abandon it. I don't think there actually was a vote to abandon it. There was a study done on development in eighty eight, I believe, that suggested that it would be a good idea to maybe consider abandoning it. So I asked Bill Murray, our consultant, what to do with this. And he said, we add two things. So if you look at High Bridge Road and the little letters after it, it says status unknown. And then under the main, the main legend here, he added the, he, he said, we should add the disclaimer basically that says no determination as to, no determination on the status and suitability of High Bridge Road to provide frontage and access to this land has been made by the planning board endorsing this. So this leaves them with no frontage that's, they can just come in and say, we want to divide this backland, which is about ten acres again, and put some of the frontage on High Bridge Road. It eliminates that possibility. They would have to come back and, and at that point determine the status of the road. So other than that, we had carefully gone through prior to last meeting, all of the other twenty four criterias that A and Rs are supposed to have.
I mean, sorry. Apologies.
So are we, I mean, approving this is a matter of everybody signing it. So I will have to come around and collect signatures on the Mylar. But are, is everybody agree that this can be signed now and has? Or do they, you have additional questions? I should point out that in this report from eighty four, where they said it should be abandoned, it also said that unused, that unused roads can count as frontage. So it's pretty contradictory. There's a lot of case law that actually says we're within our rights to not consider it frontage if the road's actually not built. At least this clarifies it for the next buyer that they have, that they're buying the land, their frontage is all on Gardner Road for that lot. So they're buying, might make sense. You could put in a long drive and get off the busy road. But they can't make two lots of the remaining land at the point. So any other, any other issues with this plan?
Madam Chair, I think at this point in time, this is Francis Steiger. I think that at this point in time, this satisfies the questions that were raised last time. As long as Mr. Murray's addendums are added into the, into the documents themselves. So I see, again, just to make sure, I'm looking at the, at the one oh six Gardner Road folder within there, there is the, let me see here, I just want to make sure that I'm referencing.
Application, and then the plan.
Correct. But I'm looking right now at the plan, a plan surveyed by Richard J. and Sandra L. Sorry, for Richard J. and Sandra L. And there's two entries in there. Those are the ones that we're discussing here, or that you mentioned earlier, which is the one that says status unknown regarding that extension beyond High Bridge Road where it goes into High Bridge Road as out of Gardner Road. And then the addition also under the notes on the right where it says no determination of the status and suitability of High Bridge Road to provide frontage and access to this land has been made by the planning board by this endorsement, right? Those are the only two items.
Right. He actually does have the two hundred feet of frontage. It's
Within their existing, within the existing A and R, right?
Yes, it's on, all on Gardner Road.
Gardner Road, yes.
Kind of clipped a corner to get it, but Bill didn't have a problem with that. You know, it's not an egregious gerrymandering of the lot line. It's just cutting into the other property that. So each of the other remaining lot has an, it has, and they both have, you know, obviously the eighty thousand square feet, but they both have two hundred feet of frontage. You can see they're calculated on the side.
Yeah.
All right. So are people going to be around tomorrow, like drive around and try to get this signed? Is there any, anybody can be out of town if I call you first?
Madam Chair, I am out of town right now as a matter of fact, but I can make certain arrangements to see if I can meet up with you. But when do they need this by?
Well, we're holding up a house closing. So as soon as I can get people's signature sometime over the weekend. Tomorrow or over the weekend.
I'll discuss with you offline.
Okay. Christopher, are you around or John this weekend?
I am around.
I'm around as well.
All right. I will call you when I'm, when I get the Mylar and try to, try to catch up with everybody. Okay, now the next law, the next thing is an invoice.
Oh, Alice, sorry, my, my screen froze. Do you have a copy of the Mylar?
I don't. No, you have the copy.
Yeah, I have it in my office. I was like, wait.
Didn't work Friday.
If they, I'm in office, so I don't know if anyone's available to come in office on Monday, I can get it done, or?
I'm wondering if I could, if we could arrange to, where do you live? Maybe I can pick it up from you.
Oh, I don't have it at home. It's at the office.
Oh, and you're not going in at all?
Um, I can tomorrow, later.
Is anybody else in there that, you know?
No, but I can meet you. I can meet you tomorrow if you want us at a time.
I probably, I probably should do that with you, but it should probably be, I hate to wait till Monday because then, then you know, you're already have lost your chance to catch people on a weekend. I'd have a pretty busy day tomorrow. How about?
I can also do it Saturday if that would work better.
Let's do it Saturday.
Okay, just. Let me, I can drop it off if you're, with you, or if you want to meet, it's totally up to you.
I can meet you at Town Hall.
Okay.
Maybe Saturday around ten o'clock. Is that good?
Yeah, I'll be there at ten.
I'll be, okay. Call me right before you leave.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Sorry, guys. It's logistics are crazy, but by driving around, I don't know, it's probably more efficient in the long run than everybody knocking at your door at odd times. Okay. We need to consider this bill. I don't know any debate. It's an invoice. It's for Bill Murray's work on fifty six Gardner Road. It's in the amount of thirty four hundred dollars. And you may recall, he, we put money in escrow that he works against in working on these projects. And fifty six Gardner was the one that was the marijuana shop and grow facility that just had this huge problem that developed because their engineer basically missed the restriction. The DCR restrictions along the back part of it. So they're starting from scratch. And I'm also told Bill thinks they're going to go to the ZBA for an appeal to allow parking on the frontage in the setback. So I don't know where it's going for here, but it's off the table. Bill's point is that if they come back with a new plan, it'll be really reorganized and he'll have to start over with a new quote. And he's into it already for this much money. So I think that's fair. And Mallory would charge, would send an invoice for this plus a fifteen percent administrative fee add-on, which helps us with the planning board have a little bit of cash for when we need advice for things that don't relate to a specific person, or if somebody wants to go to, you know, seminars or a variety of things. So can I have a vote to approve the invoice? From someone?
This is John. I make a motion to approve.
Okay, a second?
Francis Steiger, I'm seconding the motion.
Any more discussion? Hearing non-lived all eye?
Steiger, I.
Demilia, I.
Monroe, I.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So Mallory, you can take care of getting that paid, right?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. Thank you.
In device against it. And there should be, the fifteen percent should be in retained amount, too. So just take it out as well when you bill it.
Okay.
All right. I'm gonna do, is, is Roland come back yet?
No, I don't think he was planning on coming back. He was in the office when he logged in, so.
Now I feel bad. Okay, anyway, it is what it is. All right. So the next thing is a pet thing of mine, which I've been working on forever because the road situation in this town just drives me nuts. But so we have, in having your packet, the scenic road and the non-scenic road list. And then there is what's called a chapter ninety list, which in this town is used as the official road list. But it really, but I don't know how, how good that is. Because there is supposed to be an official road list. But I sat down with Travis and we tried to figure out what the story was because I knew there were roads missing from one list and on the other list. And so as a result, the way this works in town is scenic roads have to be voted in. Okay. And that list didn't have problems. And I think what the plan was originally is that between the scenic roads, you took the scenic roads out and every road that was left was a non-scenic road. And that was supposed to be the non-scenic road list, which had not been updated and didn't match the chapter ninety list. So we can amend that, the non-scenic list, because it doesn't, you know, it doesn't take a vote to be a non-scenic road. It's just the rest of the roads. So the mistakes or the contradictions I had when I looked at them were Comet Pond Access Road is a private road. And was not, was on the chapter ninety list, but not on the non-scenic road list. Moosehorn Circle and North Comet Pond Access Road. So those are roads we should add to the non-scenic list that show on the access, the, the map. X, access G, G I S and there's no controversy really about them. And then there's some corrections. Gardner Road bypass is one listed. Cut off one which is bypass. We're fixing that. Streeter is listed as a private road and was actually voted to be a public road two years ago. So that's a repair, fix. Woodview was listed as Woods View. So it's a name correction. And West Comet Pond Access Road. Again, on the official maps, it's excess. So all of these Comet Pond roads are, have the word excess. And West Comet was on there twice, once his Comet Pond Road, what, west, and once his West Comet Pond Access Road. So eliminating the duplication there. And then Travis said to me, Brookside is on the list of not scenic roads. And he says it to take it off. It doesn't exist. So, and then we had some corrections that I gave him to fix his master, his chapter ninety list with. And then in the middle, which is section two on my handout, are about fifteen roads, let's see, or a dozen or so anyway, that don't exist on the map. And they don't exist when you type them in to access G I S. And so the question is, what happened to these roads? Where are they? Why were they discontinued? Were they renamed? So that's a area we're still working on. So that's my report. But you should download, and already fix the non-scenic roads, at least to date, and put a new date at the bottom. So replace the one in your book, your non-scenic road list with this list. And I think it should help out. All right. And we'll, when I get the rest resolved with Travis and we meet again, well, it's a work in progress. So new, let's see. Okay. So then there is new business. There's a couple of new businesses, new business. One is a the people, Valerie and Robert Loring, are they here? Mallory?
No, they're not here.
All right. Okay.
Roger.
We have no petitioners here, so I'm just gonna state what's here and we're not going to make a decision, okay? There is, if you recall, with the Robert situation, the North Comet Pond Road, we made a determination having gone down there and looked at the road, done a lot of research on it, that North Comet Pond Road was a road in existence prior to subdivision approval that would be adequate for another house or two to be added, which is the intended use. in existence prior to subdivision approval that would be adequate for another house or two to be added, which is the intended use. And there was a lot of thought that went into that. Um and we had been asked for that determination prior to the Roberts who live at the end of the street submitting an A and R. Because they didn't want to go through all the work to put an A and R together and have it engineered and then be told it wasn't an adequate road. So this same issue is at heart here, these are the next people on the road, oh, going into their going down now North Comet Pond Access Road and that road divides their property. And they applied for a building permit for a new house and Roland Jean, who's the building inspector, denied it on the grounds that it didn't have ascertainable frontage. So. Or no, so he's not reckon, he did, we did tell him we had recognized that road. So I don't know actually what's really at issue here, but they're appealing his determination and we're the the board that would consider that appeal. So. I guess we're, nobody's here representing this tonight, we should put them on our next our next meeting and make sure that they come and you know, state their case.
Great, you said you've done this before, um one other time, I couldn't find anything in the documents, do you have to publicly put it in the paper or?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
Um. Uh I'll have to look at the process.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything.
I think, I don't see how we can make, I don't even know what, whether they were planning to redo the house that's there.
It sounds like they're gonna knock it down and put something else up.
It what?
Knock it down and put something else up.
At the same location.
Yeah, on the lot.
I'm not quite sure why if you're rebuilding a house on a road that already existed, but I mean, my inclination is to say the same with the other people that now that we've made that determination, which is really our determination as the planning board to make, assuming you can prove that the road existed, which they did and with all the maps, that clears the way for an A and R plan. Wouldn't change the fact that it's a private road, so they would still need permission of the other people on the road. But I suspect that we may need a legal opinion on some of this. But I'm not going further until I know what the issues really are, so unless there's some objection or anybody has a better idea on the board, I would say Mallory, set it up for our next meeting and ask the parties to come in.
Sure.
And I will check the process.
Sounds good.
But my, but my understanding is, once you've made that recognition, recognition that it was a road in existence at the time, then that clears the way for an A and R, but they would have to survey out the road and, and come to us again, but I need to know Roland's thinking on this, because it was just a letter that didn't give any further explanation. So that's where we're gonna leave it. Um other new business is uh we're meeting with the planning board, everybody on February first, six thirty. I mean, I'm sorry, the select board and planning board are gonna have a joint meeting at six thirty. And I think it's, we do this basically once a year, uh there are some issues that we want to discuss with them. But my thinking is then our next planning board meeting would be two, four, three days later. And maybe the better thing to do, unless there's something urgent that comes up, which I'm not aware of at the moment, um would be to skip our meeting on the fourth and just meet once in February on the eighteenth. What, what does it people feel about that?
Hey Alice, this is John, that's fine with me, because I would not be able to make the fourth meeting.
Can you make the second, I mean the first, the pla- select board one?
No, that is the go-live at Haywood, I will be busy for fifteen days.
Okay, okay, John, we'll count you, we, we'll count you out, okay? Can everybody else uh make the, the meeting on the first?
Uh I do plan on attending, yes.
Okay, so that's two and Christopher? Okay, and would you guys then like to skip the meeting on the, I mean, if something comes up, I'll call you if something's really urgent, but.
Yeah, if there's nothing urgent, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do, okay, Mallory? We're gonna cancel our meeting on the fourth, meet on, you just hold a meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Old business, um the letter to ninety-one Williamsville was sent that the burn was completed, the certificate to generate for the solar field was issued. Affordable housing, I've got a little bit of news, uh last night was a CPA meeting, you know, Community Preservation Act meeting and the CPC approved twenty thousand dollars for it's a habitat for humanity house. They submitted an application and still gotta get through town meeting vote, but there is, by the way, forty thousand dollars in our account allocated specifically for um affordable housing, so that would be twenty of that forty, there's still twenty left. And then there's also the bigger pot of undesigned funds you can draw from. But what I did, we did it that way rather than try to take it out of the fifty, because now most of that fifty is being committed to try to see if we can develop gravel pit lot into senior housing, which we approved last week, so I also updated the CPC with what was going on with that. And just as a note, doesn't so much involve us, but it's interesting to note, the CPC has also approved a seventy-five thousand dollar grant for acquisition of two hundred and seventy-five acres of land off Lombard Road. Which it isn't all at cost, but with partnerships that are being assembled to purchase that land. Was very significant vote last night, I thought you might be interested in. Master plan that was tonight. You read it again and send corrections, there are always corrections and questions.
Like those to go to you directly?
I think you can send them to Mallory directly and send them off her, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send some to.
Yeah, some papers in there, which, I mean, I'm sure that other people will catch them too.
Yeah, I need to proofread a little more, um. I mean, there's so much to digest in there, it's kind of like you look at it and you say, where do you start, you know? But. Um, you know, as you read through it, if you have questions, I had some questions I didn't ask, there were some references that they made to things I didn't understand. I think also you should really feel free to just email them or even pick up the phone and talk to them. I think the worst thing that can happen is you have a master plan and then it becomes, you know, a decoration on the bookshelf, so we need to figure out a way to get some of these ideas implemented, you know? Okay, so. The, now we're down to the solar and battery storage issue. And I'm, Francois, I gave us, gave me really great little what was it, YouTube video.
We're into YouTube.
Here, we, about a battery storage unit place, so you could see what it looks like and how it's useful and how it. But anyway, do you want to address the issue a minute?
It's not an issue, it's just basically, um I, I shared with uh, with the chair, the uh YouTube I found, which uh was really from the town of Reading that uh presented a um brief video, I mean, it's not more than, I think it's not more than two minutes long, on a project that was implemented in Reading for battery energy storage system. It gave a very brief demonstration slash explanation of what this was, what the rationale behind this was and it was a uh time-lapsed video of the actual project, so indicated in terms of how the land looked at the very beginning and then at the very end with uh, you know, big earth movers coming in and then making uh trenches and uh putting the platforms in and so forth and, you know, it was like a before and then at the very end and after. I, I thought it was very instructional, because I think a lot of individuals really have no idea how this thing looks. And more importantly, this concept is uh stands by itself, this, this was not something that was part of a uh solar energy facility, but rather this was really something that stood by itself and uh and, and again, somebody can get some, some better understanding and better ideas to how these things look uh standings, you know, by, 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 by having the, the the video uh show them, so I'm happy to share this here uh with the board, I'm just kind of concerned that by sharing it with the board I, I, I'm hoping I'm not violating any kind of open meeting law, so what we may end up doing here is, is uh, i- if that is okay, uh I'll include that as part of a uh URL also uh in the meeting agenda that we have coming up and so that the, the, the public in general can, can view it. Because again, it is, it is public information, but it's just wanted to make sure that this, you know, folks understand and know this is just basically, it's, 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 it's sharing information. So, so individuals uh in our community, in our town uh can also educate themselves about what this, what, what something like this here potentially could look like.
And so, and then their issue would be, since it's not an allowed use at the moment, would be to incorporate it in.
Correct, I mean, again, this is, this is uh, this is something I, as, as I promised uh to, to uh, to you, I, I am going to be, continue to work on this here. We have had the good fortune of being able to speak with the gentleman from uh the town of Athol who provided us with uh their um their bylaw and we're using that as a model and I'm trying to adapt it for the purposes of uh something that we can start working on creating our own bylaw here for the, for the town of Hubbardston.
We haven't circulated that Athol bylaw, have we?
No, and as a matter of fact, that, that, that bylaw right now, as you recall, is still under review with the Attorney General's Office. So I think it's not an officially uh adopted bylaw, because it still has to go through that last hurdle and from what I understood in our conversation with uh, with Eric, uh that, that should happen soon, hopefully that they will get some, some feedback on that, right?
Yeah, and thi- this was recent, they just put this law through last fall, they're following.
Bylaw went, I think, uh through town meeting in October.
October, right, so. So here's the issue with this too, is they, they did both this new battery facility bylaw and at the same time redid their solar bylaw. And I think the solar bylaw is really outstanding. And I don't, I think he said that the Attorney General's Office said maybe okay, the solar one, and they were just waiting on the battery one, I'll have to ask.
Even, uh yes, they did receive a, their feedback from the Attorney General's Office, I think there were some, some some notes that the Attorney General's Office did provide them with, I don't think there was anything that was uh problematic, but uh they did receive that back, it's the battery energy storage system at this point in time still has not come back to them.
Right, okay, so these two, these two things are kind of related and we were trying to patch our present bylaw, but I'm really leaning towards sending out this new one and there was one a bylaw from Charlton that was much better than ours too, all of the solar bylaws all over the Commonwealth, all originated from a two thousand ten model bylaw that the Commonwealth put out.
Correct.
Or anyway, so they've had many they, you know, they've had iterations since and, and ours has been amended a number of times since, but um this one seems to be really a comprehensive revision that makes a lot of sense to me and incorporates, incorporates a lot of those things, so I'll just go through a couple of the things, so this, thi- this new one, it wouldn't require a special permit, we require a special permit for everything, uh which actually makes it less attractive, because under the point system, if you're developing if you're attracting solar, you gain points if you allow it as a right versus putting a special permit impediment. But what they do instead is that, is they have a pre-application conference where the butters are notified and it's, it's like, kind of like the marijuana law, it's a pre-conference where the community in that area of the neighborhood gets public notice and they get a full-blown presentation before the submission. And I think that makes some sense, rather than the first time they hear about it is when um the we're already under the pressure because of special permits been filed, you know? So I like that about it, they do have site plan review, which we do, they have defined um a lot more, fleshed out a lot more things that go into buffering, buffer zones and citing. Um we have right now a two acre minimum for a solar field, which I think is ridiculous. They have a ten acre minimum and a twenty-eight or twenty acre maximum. Which I think makes a lot of sense, a five megawatt AC you know, size limit, which is a fit on twenty acres, so that you can't have big swaths of fifty acres anymore. And you can't develop a lot that's less than ten, so you can't stick one in a neighborhood, that makes sense to me. You can't construct it on a slope that's greater than ten percent. That makes sense to me. These are just things that we, we should either fix ours to do or just start over with a new you can use this as a model. Setback, we have a very small setback, um there's a two hundred and four hundred from a major water body shore, I mean, just things that are common sense. So, my goal is, since everybody hasn't seen this, which was kind of an oversight on my part, I will send out the solar or the uh Athol, both the solar bylaw and the battery storage bylaw. And ask you all to read them for next time. And then we can take it up as a discussion. Unless.
Absolutely, great.
I think you're gonna get a better result than trying to cut apart the old one and fix it. So. I do think eventually we should also send it to our to Bill Murray and get his read on it, you know, how well would this model work in Hubbardston, which is somewhat different than Athol, but has many of the same issues. Okay. I think that brings us pretty much to the end of nothing new on um marijuana facilities, I did attend also this, since we met last, uh Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee meeting, which is which is kind of crazy, actually, that I'm, I'm the person that goes to it, but they do talk about new grant opportunities and I did forward those all to Ryan, so that's just a note, and he is actually applying for one of them regarding the redevelopment of High Street, I believe, so maybe we can find out more about it on the first, when we meet with the select board jointly. Okay, no members of the public have popped in, have they, Mallory?
Nope.
Your second for public comments, okay. Alright, so we'll see, we'll adjourn and I'll take a motion, but the next meeting we've agreed will be the first with the select board and then we're not gonna meet on the fourth. Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
This is Francois, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second, somebody?
I second, Christopher.
Okay, not debatable, lived all eye.
By your eye.
Monroe, eye.
Demilia, eye.